Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Minnie and Randall are absent with notice and the permit is absent with notice.
Any additions or approval for the agenda? I want you to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes from the five-four meeting. Make a motion for that. Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Lo, Monahan.
Yeah.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Do they want to make a motion to approve the bill submitted for payoff?
No.
Second.
If not, Lo, O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here from the public that wants to address the council on any dots? Not on me either. Yep, go right in.
I was stopped by Gail Blocker.
State your name so they got it for that.
Mark Criscull.
Yep.
About having the city help with pickleball.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that tonight. We've been gathering quotes and we've been talking about resurfacing. I think we're going to talk about that today. Probably Barry Craig's report, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Thanks. Sorry, Dan. Unless you want to, you can sure tell us more.
Well, I'm just trying to be nice.
Why did you say that?
Okay, we have to wait till 7:05. So can we jump to something here?
You can do that. Jamboree.
Game back. That's out here. Uh, let's talk about, let's jump down to special event permit for Jamboree Days. And review approved special event application. Ms. Leah.
Yes. Included with it are scheduled events. There's a couple of things as of last night that changed on the schedule. The use of alternate is they canceled it. So, right?
Yep.
Okay. They fully canceled it. Um, the dunk tank we've added. Do you want to get the times to me?
Yes, we're working on it.
Okay. They got dunk tank is added and then the only other change, or no, we have two more changes. The music on Friday, which is something new banned, is going to go from six to eight and then after the burnout to 11 and it will be done at 11. You think at 11:30.
Thirty, yep.
We're adding a snake course by Great Life. And then added the dunk tank too. So those are the only changes. So nothing major, but there are a few changes if you guys look at it. I also included the map and the 5K map. The only other thing we're asking, um, other than what was already listed, since they are not doing the softball tournaments, if we would be able to, as part of the equipment, use the bleachers on Friday night for the burnout?
That's your fault.
You need to turn off. To use the bleachers on Friday, Craig, the company would move them.
My call.
Any other questions of what I included on the application? Try to be as detailed as I can.
Just a question on, uh, I thought the Jamboree tournament had been very popular. What was the reason, do you know the reason for the cancellation?
They were hoping to get the other fields and with the carnival being up in air, they didn't really know and they felt they were going to be too big for just two fields. And when I called them last night and told them that the fields are all open, just wondering what time you'd be able to, or what times you wanted, they ended up cancelling because a lot of the teams had already committed to like Yankton or Pierre or somewhere like that. So they said they just decided to cancel it. So they're hoping that next year, maybe those other two fields will be playable and maybe they'll be able to post if they want to. So they're not going to give up on it. They just, this year, just felt for this year.
Am I trying to delegate in that question?
That was good. Um, motion to approve special event application and waive the $25 fee. Any more discussion?
Does that, did you talk about road closures?
That's included.
Is that all?
Yeah. You guys seen the road closures, right?
And the only thing you would like to add is that Craig's guys moved the...
The bleachers.
Bleachers.
Use them.
Problem with that, Craig?
Yeah, we've already, yeah, permission, I guess, for, to help with Jamboree and we just want, or anything, just permission to use them, bleachers. Okay.
Any other questions for Leah or discussion? Not, we'll vote, Monahan.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right.
Yeah, 2716, I'll sit down.
Okay. 7:05, we're at, uh, at a hearing for the malt beverage renewals.
I think most approve the malt beverage renewals as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion?
There's no changes, is there, Teresa? Same as last year?
No, she said the mountain hall.
Now, if further discussion, we'll vote. O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Oh, we have to wait for 7:10. Is that for you?
Yes, I'll sit back down.
I'm supposed to want to do the budget one first.
Yeah, let's do that. We'll jump down to the request for release for budgeted funds for Jamboree.
You guys just want to sit and hold some, that's why we do that.
Yeah, that's why we're doing that.
No changes on what was budgeted. So what was presented in August, that's what our committee also approved on.
Want you to approve the release of funds for Jamboree Committee for $25 that was budgeted.
Second. Can I ask one question? Are we no on the carnival?
As of right now, it's a no, but that doesn't mean we haven't quit.
Okay.
Jeff is still diligently working on the carnival that Del Rapids is trying to get because Del Rapids is saying they're having them, but they haven't committed to it. And if they go to Del Rapids, we might be able to get a couple rides, but as of right now, it's still a no.
Is that the same weekend? Dell's is the same weekend as ours, or no?
I don't think so. I think they're a weekend apart.
Okay.
So they would be coming through. If they would go, they'd be coming through so we can piggyback off of that. But they haven't even committed to that.
Okay.
Well, um, so you, you think your group will take the carnival over in its entirety from year four since the...
We discuss that next year.
Next year, yeah.
I have way too much on my plate from this year to think about next year.
All right. So since the chamber gave it up, you guys are going to try to do something this year?
We're still trying to get a couple of rides. If we can't, Jeff will just put up more of the games. Yeah, he'll still bring in his games and everything that he's had in the past. So, yeah, we're still trying to have something for that respective year. So it'll still be a carnival field without the rides.
All right. Sounds good. Any other questions for Leah? Not, we'll vote. Monahan.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, you might as well stay put and I will do your 7:10 hearing for application for special malt beverage license.
Yes. And for us, it would just be Friday night through the burnout and the car show.
Yep.
And then Saturday, I put it till 12:30 just so that we can wrap everything up. Everything will be done as far as music and that at midnight. But just in case we have people still cleaning up and that, I just wanted to extend it that extra half hour, just so we're covered into that extra half hour to Sunday. And it would only be in the park. So in the past, I know that we decided to open containers throughout, you know, the areas that were designated. This would only be limited to the park. So anything beyond that, not it. So if they're walking down Second Street, that's not me. And we do have for Saturday night, we also do have some, um, our security group that's done the party and banning, they'll be doing the party banning again. That way we'll make sure that we're watching the legal enforcement.
Are you going to have like one or two entrances? Have kind of a...
And we're not really, we're encouraging more of a concert venue.
Okay.
So it's not going to be like crazy.
Yep.
We're encouraging the lawn chairs, concert venue, listen to music.
Okay.
More of a family orientated type of venue.
But no coolers, if they're buying beer or drinking beer, they're buying it for you?
Yep, that way we can control the fact of age.
Okay. Anything else? Did we get a motion on this? I don't know if we did. And they want to make a motion on this one?
Motion to approve special application for malt beverage permit for the Jamboree Committee for the 2021 Jamboree Event.
I'll second. You want to waive the fee?
I'm going to waive the $25 application fee.
Can we add that in? You want to still second it?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right, I think that's it. We won't, we'll let you set for a couple minutes later. Just call you up for some other question.
It's like giving the kids an allowance and then every time you go to the store, they still ask for money.
Special event permit for Buffalo Ridge Brewing for June 17th Beetles and Brews Drive-In.
Kelly Tushen with Buffalo Ridge Brewery submitted this and she called me this afternoon and said she wasn't going to be able to make the meeting, but, um, nothing has changed from what the permit says. Basically, they're going to do this event in conjunction with the Jamboree Days, but it'll be on Thursday night. Um, it, they're going to have kind of a car show, but it's about around beetle bugs and beetles there. Um, they would like to ask that people can drink on the sidewalk around their brewery and then to close off First Street basically from Main to the alley. So the street just south of their brewery there. And that way people can, there'll be an area where people can be outside and mingle and then they can park the bugs there. They will be selling, you know, within their premises though. They're just asking for people to use alcohol outside. Once from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, so you have to look at it all.
All right, let's see if you paid the fee.
Yep.
Would that be? I was looking for like a map. What that area would be?
Just Main Street down to their alley, right? Just...
So not Main Street at all. Basically, it's just First Street from Main to the alley.
Yeah, okay, that's what I meant.
That little section that's just south of their brewery there, yep.
All right.
You put a lot of hog in that short little area there.
I'm sure you can.
You can park a hog.
Because you can stack them. All right, we got any motions for this?
Make a motion to approve. Buffalo Ridge Special Event.
Second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right, next one we're moving on to is Sump Bar Special Event for cornhole tournament on the 19th, excuse me, in conjunction with Jamboree Days. I think most approve. Looks like you blocked it off Main from First down to your corner, passed it.
Correct.
Do you need the city to work with you at all for some barricades or anything?
Yes.
Do we have enough barricades for that weekend, Craig, to make that happen?
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll be okay.
All right.
We usually block that whole area off.
Okay.
For, for, I'm just looking at the mains.
From First to Main.
First to Main, yeah.
So do we rent them?
Yeah.
All right, I'm looking at the whole area.
Okay.
Don't we technically close Main from Main to Second?
That's what we've done the past, well, we came down the part halfway on the block.
But that's when you have the street gas down here and stuff.
Yeah, but I mean, instead of piecemeal, why don't we do that anyway? Why don't we just have Main down from Second to Main? We just call it a day.
I think they're looking at keeping First Street open yet?
I have no idea.
First would be open, West would be main, as I'm putting it together.
Well, this is two different days though.
Yeah, that's true.
This is two different days, yeah. So this is Saturday, the other one's Thursday night. I think you, I mean, you're just going to do your tournament right on the street, correct?
Yes.
Yep. That should work out.
We're going to do the label set here soon.
Yeah, we're going to need a full size map with replica buildings by the next meeting.
And yeah, we should be in your chair.
We got a motion to second on this one? Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Uh, next one is special event for Hartford Chamber. Miss Amy. So this is for block party instead of the...
Business in the park.
Business in the park. Okay.
So the idea is instead of using the park, we'll be using the street here in front of the, um, City Hall and we'll have a band and some inflatables. So, yeah, we'll need to block it off so we can do that.
Okay, so you want the main to, first to Second and then the alley down on the other side?
Mm-hmm.
Are you utilizing Century Square?
No, we won't be now.
Okay, I was wondering why you didn't block the barricades down on that half block.
We're going to talk about that, right? I don't think you're going to put anything there. You're going to have the inflatables down there. Um, the one thing I think that we talked about and I don't have on there is we might need some picnic tables, I think. We talked about on the street if that's possible.
$5,000 apiece, isn't that what they're going price now?
Just have to bring my own.
I think we could probably allow the chamber to use some picnic tables. Is that going to be a hassle? Oh, this is a different weekend again, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, this will be a July.
Yeah.
And it's on Wednesday night, I believe. And as I'm looking at the street closures, I think I wrote down, so Main Street from First to Second.
Yeah.
Not Second Street, but it's actually First Street. From, yeah, from Main to the alley. On the south side of the brewery, just like before. Yeah, that should be First Street instead of Second.
Sure.
Clarify that.
So it's like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, because that's the thing to put in the game, the thing that they're going to talk about. Yeah.
All right. Don't worry, I don't think we have to, we don't. It's good, no. All right, did we get a motion on this one yet? When do you need no, when do you need no buy?
Today would be great time to put on our calendar.
That's for Jesse.
That's for Jesse.
That's me. That's just me.
Didn't he normally say I'd like an answer this evening?
Yeah, yeah. I make most be approved. I'll second. Any further discussion?
We'll waive the fee.
Oh, yeah, you guys are going to waive the fee? Yep. All right, sure.
Using the city picnic tables? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to pay for those? You're waiting for them?
They should come back next month and after.
She's a good mind, that's all. Trying to see to know what to put in the motion.
I don't think I ever told you, Karen, I heard you. She's watching it. She's watching.
Motion to waive, all right, the table and, uh, that.
Should we vote on this one and then make that a second motion?
Yeah, first, we've heard it, so we got it. Okay, any more discussion on the application? No? As well, Monahan.
Agreed with motion, right?
Um, motion to approve the special event permit and waive the fee.
Yeah.
I'll apply for it.
I'm a yes. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, now.
Make a motion to waive the fee for picnic tables. Is that the lead?
Yeah.
I think the use of picnic tables and waive the fee, because we didn't have that in our application, so.
Is it a fee or, uh, sorry?
Second.
Is it a fee or just the deposit?
There's both. You, we have deposit that gets returned to them and then there's $5 fee on top.
So we'll waive the fee.
Waive the fee, not the deposit.
Perfect. Okay, I like it. Waive the fee, not the deposit. Got it. Any other discussion?
Who is the second?
Travis.
You.
There's not many of us.
I know.
I'm not getting my name under my head, I like that.
30% chance of getting that.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Anything else, Amy?
No, just a reference to the dunk tank. If you haven't already been contacted, you each will be asked to participate.
I haven't, I've already said no.
You might have taken that in there. Thank you.
I haven't been asked. Thank you though for asking. I've been asked and I've already said no, so.
You could draw a lot of funds for us, you know.
I got a, you need me to get a medical waiver?
It can be more hard.
No.
Maybe.
Not two of them.
Oh, my. All right, 7:00, uh, second reading and order at 7:06 to establish the Park and Rec Board.
Make a motion to table the 19. Why?
Second. And we can't discuss that, correct?
No, not the table.
O'Hara?
No.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan? I'm going to say, I'm going to say no. So is that two and two? What does that do? Kills it?
Fails.
Tables it? No.
Doesn't table.
Doesn't table.
The motion failed, so it doesn't table it.
Okay.
The reason for the table is because if you go around tonight, it's going to fail and it's going to be on the next meeting.
Fair enough.
That's what my real draw was.
Oh, sure.
It doesn't matter to me.
So we have to act on it, correct? Since it didn't...
We're going to do something.
Can we re-vote again to table? We have another motion to table.
I do not believe you can do that twice. Say most of twice.
But you didn't say date, so you can say...
I could say, I'd say you could. No accident until the next meeting.
This was just a flat motion to table.
Yeah.
Motion to table, second reading, ordered at 7:07 to our next city council meeting.
That's not what he said.
He just said motion to table.
He said table. Oh. He didn't have a date. Okay, too. Catch up.
Okay.
Table's a definite.
Potentially. Yeah.
Yeah, it could just kill forever.
Table till the next meeting and at least puts a date on it. You mo, you made the motion, do we have a second to that one?
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, for now. Thank you, Mark.
My motion didn't pass.
You were, you're just...
If anybody remembers first reading.
Yeah, you voted no.
I voted no.
Yeah, I remember that.
So it's standard reasoning.
Well, I'll argue.
That it's not going to pass tonight if we vote.
He slept with the other guy. He's got a lot.
Sorry.
All right. Second reading and order at 7:07. This is the rezone down on, uh, Western Avenue. From residential to community commercial.
I think most approve, second reading, word is 7:07.
Second. Any discussion? No changes, correct?
No.
No. All right, we'll vote. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right, uh, reports, we'll start with, uh, Fire Chief Matt Horn.
Good evening. So April, we did 44 toll calls, 16 on the city limits. Uh, through April, that puts us at 141 already for the year, so it's still pretty busy. Uh, May training will be EMS, stroke, immediate and CRM. Fire is going to be apparatus pumping and SCVAs for self-contained breathing apparatus. And as you all know, we had a pancake feed last weekend, which was a big success, so I think we have about 900 people, give or take, come through, so.
Wow.
It's good.
Um, how is one forty-one compared to last year, do you know?
We're on pace to be about the same as last year.
Okay.
Last year we did, uh, four hundred.
Some calls. Any questions for Matt?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chamber in Economic Development, Amy Farr.
Thank you. So my information is on or in the packet. Um, one thing I'd like to touch on for sure is the Chamber wrapped up Discover Hartford. Um, have had great response to that. Was again on the Bill Zortman Show. Um, he really pushed Hartford this time, thank him for that. Um, we announced our two winners, they were Christina Horn and Sharon Brugman, if I said that correctly. Um, and the first time we went on, Stacy Winkler and myself were on, and then this last time it was Amy Larson and myself. Um, so we are excited. Um, the winners will be picking up their prizes this Friday. So finishing that up. Currently working on a couple additional things, the dunk tank, we have secured for jamboree days as well as some people being dumped as well. Um, for the Black Party, we have, um, secured the inflatables and the Good Road Band for that evening. Working on the golf tournament and securing some sponsorships there as well. Um, for the Development Corporation, um, continue to work on, um, some RPIs that come through as well as some other, um, individual people looking at land opportunities. Um, let's see here. Um, did go ahead and get the Mid-American Economic Development, um, intern money, so have hired an intern to begin, uh, in June here until August. And he will assist with various projects that the HADF has put together. Other than that, that's where we're at on that. Oh, and the new sign, there's a new sign, just down the road here.
Oh, I seen that down on the lot.
Yes, to sell it. Mm-hmm.
Does it say that?
We're working on that. Thanks, Travis. Couldn't leave it alone.
Details, details.
Well, they keep sending me wrong signs, so I tell them I want different colors and they are not liking it.
All right, any questions for Amy? All right, thank you, Engineers Report. Dave.
Evening, folks. Um, design standards and some previous agenda items, uh, we've actually gotten through all the design standards. Uh, we have extended some time to go through those with Craig. Um, some modifications on that, we kind of indicated, we're gonna have some suggestions on that, uh, which would be kind of potential modifications, we'll have some that are, hey, we should get this changed, some clarifications, things like that. So we'll go through that with Craig first and then we'll, we'll bring those later. Um, CIP updates, that's a later ongoing item, Western Avenue's Phase Four, insertion resumed and curb guard is in. Uh, Phase Five comments were back to the developer, we're just waiting for their comments back to our comments, um, from there. Um, punch lists on Maps Interpreta Creek. Uh, GIS, we've actually got that up and running and, um, going back and forth, I'm just kind of gonna tweak that and kind of walk through that and just see what we wanna do for modifications moving forward. Um, I won't go over the twelfth street because I know that's later in the, in the council packet as well. Um, on the re-sorter feasibility study, we've actually gone through, um, quite a bit, uh, since the last time that we, that we had met. Um, discussions continue with quite a few communities, the sludge judging was completed and, um, putting the cost estimates on all of the receiving streams. So really what would we take to kind of that regionalization component of what's the lift station cost, whether fortunately the cost to bring that back, and we're giving those costs as much right at this point in time. So we'll have that moving tomorrow morning to go over more of that. Any questions?
The comment, I guess, looks like Vance hasn't replied to the letter.
Do you want us, we most certainly send another one or just reach out and say, where are you at with the, with the modifications?
Probably get more.
I'll talk to him Thursday.
I say with the phone call, you're trying to get more response from Vance.
Yep.
I'll talk to him Thursday.
You'll talk to him Thursday.
Is that golf fee?
Do it early in the night.
I'll let him meet him.
Any other questions?
Well, it's good to see that our, uh, lagoon system is healthy and well taken care of.
Yeah, yeah, not much for sludge in there, I, you know, I, I think we were, we were not that surprised with the, the further clarification cells, we knew there wasn't gonna be much, Craig, you had a good feeling on that. I think we were a little bit, um, concerned on the aeration cells, you know, just, 'cause that's the easiest spot to fill that, I mean, that's where you're gonna drop out a lot of sludge. But two and a half or one and a half, that's pretty good, honestly. Um, we even talked about, from a, from a feasibility standpoint, if you were to upgrade the aeration in that, that, those cells, if you were to remain in that location, um, you could actually get quite a bit of that to, not, in a sense, degrade further, um, with additional aeration. You can actually get that to pull off to the bottom and you can get additional aeration and you can actually get that to function in that same fashion, so you can actually burn some of that off by additional aeration, if that's the optional issue, so. Still weighing those options for sure. Um, but looking at quite a few of those options and, and as it indicated in there on the technology side, we had Smith and Wobbs present on mechanical design, so we're still most certainly evaluating multiple, um, opportunities.
Well, it's tightened up, it's the ammonia that's tightened up though, right?
Yeah.
On a table.
Yeah.
So, so further aeration's not gonna solve.
No.
The problem.
Yeah.
It'll just solve the solids problem.
Exactly.
So you wouldn't have to dredge it.
Exactly.
We've never dredged it.
No, nope.
So two and a half feet.
Isn't, no, isn't that bad.
What's it been, Craig, eighteen years, nineteen years?
Nineteen years. Mm-hmm.
Two and a half feet and nineteen years, ain't that?
No. And, and if you look at the size of those secondary, uh, secondary cells, right, I mean, six inches isn't bad, but when you look at that entire area, it's, there's still some, some decent amount of sludge in there, it's just not to a depth that it's impacting your treatment, right, in a sense, uh, today. So that's a really good positive, that there's, there's good treatment going through the, the control of the certain one today.
So even if you did beef up the aeration, would you dredge it before you did that? Or would you just beef up the?
We'd just beef up the aeration.
And let that do it.
I would probably do that first, if, if we stayed in that location, I'd probably beef up the aeration, um, as a tactic, but from your, from your question, the ammonia standpoint, it's still some level of attached type of treatment process, right? So that would still be included, and that would beat down the ammonia, but the, the, uh, the sludge there, I wouldn't have a concern that you would need to remove that if you included that additional aeration, I wouldn't do that at this point in time, no.
With the ammonia?
No, with the ammonia, you'd still have some level of additional treatment attached, you know.
You wouldn't dredge it, right?
You wouldn't dredge it, agreed.
So if we stayed in that location, I don't wanna say long term and I don't wanna say ban date, but if we stayed in that location, we'd treat the ammonia on the back end and we'd beef up the aeration.
Agreed.
And then we'd worry about, well, you don't have to dread it, I'm asking.
No, that's what we do.
And then we'd beef up the aeration and worry about the solids when we need to.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Just 'cause that, that, with the depth of the weekends that they are today and what we've had findings for sludge, I don't think that's impacting, you know, when you get to a certain level, you can't, you can't really just pull that off to the bottom and get additional treatment for that. Um, but with the level it is right now, I'd be confident that we could do additional aeration, still attach some level of, um, additional treatment at the existing location. So we're just moving down that path. Now, if we move away from that location, these are good numbers to know because you don't just get to abandon it in site and, and bury the sludge. So that's a cost that we, we need to know. Um, so if we abandon that particular location, you still need that remediation of the sludge, removal, disposal, et cetera. So we're gonna calculate that and as, as a cost to incur with that particular option.
Is that a landfill option or is that a local farmer option or?
Farmer option.
Armored.
Yep, 'cause you're gonna have an adequate supply of it, you know, we've, we've talked about this significantly in our, in our meetings, um, but on the, even on the new treatment technology, mechanical plant technology aspect, that's where we're talking, talking about more of a, um, a landfill option. And that's really because there's gonna be, in a mechanical plant, there's gonna be continuous sludge. So that's, that's.
That'd be compacted too, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we do water, de-water it, yep, yep. And we're looking at de-watering technology and, um, and those options as well.
And then if you did that right, then you'll ride into a truck or trailer or dumpster or whatever.
Yeah. Yep. You can, you can have, and we've, we've been looking at, we've looked at communities that did that as well, is that they actually did some level of sludge storage on-site, so it gets them, um, Alta was a good example, they, they go, they really kind of like their control of the stuff, you know, they dispose of it every, uh, every six months. So they have adequate storage for their sludge on-site in a, in a hoop building in a sense, or some type of containment, then they would then dispose of that and land it fly. If you were not gonna land it fly, no, you end up, you're not a sludge that you're really putting this, you end up putting a roll-off dumpster and get that taken to the landfill. 'Cause it's, it's a sound quality that's really valuable for, uh.
Application.
Application, yep, yep.
All right.
Anything else for Dave? Some weird stuff in those roll-offs.
Yeah, for sure, yep.
Really weird stuff.
Yep.
All right.
Lot of wipes. Yep.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, next on the agenda, Stockwell has the report. Are there any action items that we need to deal with here?
No, no action items. I, I guess the biggest thing to point out is, um, Shamrock Properties did go and do the reseeding along Vandenmark, so that's all done and completed. They've talked to the property owners about care and maintenance of it, Stockwell sent out a sheet about care and maintenance of it, so it'll be up to those property owners to kind of get it going, keep it going now, so.
Just hit the seed window too, didn't it?
And it just hit the seed window, yep. Yep, they were good to get it right.
And Mickelson, it looks like they're, they've talked to the contractor and that's supposed to be done by June fifteenth.
Yep, they give them until June fifteenth and that's to kind of middle out that hump or whatever they're gonna do kind of with that hump there.
Okay.
And they are continuing, I do see emails going back and forth with FEMA, who thinks they ask for information and give it back, so that Walmart is, is ongoing still.
All right. Good enough. Craig, Public Works Superintendent Report.
Just gonna touch on a few things before we start talking about the tennis court. Um, along the streets, we did get the speed trailer and the traffic counters out, we put the traffic counters out on my sports complex, we set them up so we could check speeds, type of vehicle, counts, all that stuff, so. So we pull in those probably next Monday, they've been out since last week, but it's an extra day down there before we take them. Um, and then I, Gabe, he wants me to bring a speed trailer up, well, we got it now, he wants to bring it up to Vandenmark, uh, this next week or this week, so we'll be bringing up that earlier next. Um, I got some places on trees to put around the leaf branch site, if you have a chance to see those. Um, all of it's gonna be, take some time to grow, you know. When you're looking at, you know, lilacs, you're sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred dollars. Uh, black hills, blue spruce, depending on what size you go, you can do between twenty, eight hundred dollars and sixty, one hundred, so.
What do you recommend?
If, I guess if we're gonna do it, I'd look, I'd maybe do a lilac and black hills, blue spruce, I don't know if I'd go with the, um, burlap bag because she said that the three footers are actually pretty decent trees and that's something we can plan out too. You're just getting too big of a, I mean, they want them spaced even further than that, but spaced more closer, you'll get a lot better block, you know, you couldn't even stagger the pines in there, um, but your pines would be there all the time, your lilacs would probably grow a little faster.
Who would, uh, plant, plant these, is this the city planting these?
We could do that or we could have like, um, if you, like the lilacs, he's the one gave me the price on them, if you plant some, he's a warranty for a year, you know. So the other ones would be one of those that we just go pick up and take our chance with and see.
I know this isn't in the budget, but we have to revisit this next week or next, on our next meeting, or can we make a motion on it?
We should put it on the next agenda, 'cause if it's an action, we're gonna want to do action.
I didn't know if that, if the amount was small enough that it was almost like, uh.
A freebie.
Petty cash.
Petty cash, yeah. We don't have that much of petty cash. I can put it on the next agenda though.
Yeah, let's do that. Thanks, Craig, for giving that.
Um, next thing is bike trail, I guess I'd just like to thank the Hartford Humble Boy Scouts, troop eight, they went back in those trees and they picked up a ton of garbage back in there, so thanks to them for doing that. Um, and then the last thing, which is on the agenda, is the tennis court pickleball. So I had, I got ahold of Mark Cotter with, um, uh, Sioux Falls, City of Sioux Falls, just asked him who they have do their tennis courts not resurfacing, uh, he gave me the guy's name of Denny with, um, Janco, they're out of, thought they're out of, they're meaning things out of water tub, this actually came out of Renner, South Dakota. Um, he came out and looked at it last week and he said, don't waste your money trying to resurface this, he said, it's not gonna last, he said, the cracks, so keep coming through it, he said, you're gonna get moisture in there and it's gonna pop and lift, he said, plus the cleanup of it, just to get prepared to even do any surfacing, and he said, he goes, it'd be well over twenty-five thousand, it wouldn't last, he said, don't have to do that. So he said, don't waste your money on, uh, on resurfacing. So that gives us basically two options then, whether to go with, and the one price I got there was, um, for, this is just for a half, a little over half the court, which would be set up for pickleball and tennis, um, that's with the tiles. Uh, we would have to do some patching ourselves, which wouldn't be much, and some scraping, some areas and grinding a few little of the high spots with, the paint high spots and the surfacing high spots, just to get it so it's less in there better. And looking at a little over fifty thousand for, for that, fifty-three thousand, closer to fifty-four, like I said, that would just be a sixty by one twelve, that would be set up for both pickle and tennis. Um, to go in there and tear it out and re-removals and replace the concrete, um, price they got was a hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty. Um, and then you'd have to surface it after that, so you're looking at another fourteen-five to surface it after that. If we would decide to do something like that, we would have to go off the bins out of it, 'cause it's over the hundred thousand. So that's what I got for numbers.
On this, uh, sport court. There's a thirty-three thousand dollar option, that's in addition to the fifty-three that'd be above and beyond that. Power game for modules, thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, it's a different, uh, I think it's a different, um, texture, a different thickness or something like that at the tile.
Okay.
Cheaper tile.
Yeah, when I looked at that, Trav, I thought that that meant if we were with that option, save us about ten grand.
Right, instead of our first line, that'd be in forty-three, it'd be.
It'd be thirty-three.
Okay.
Gotcha, yep.
Well, Mark, if you have anything to say about the pickleball anymore.
Well, go ahead. Hi, I'm Kathy Boyle, I've been within Hartford for the last six years, we love it here. Um, can I ask some questions about, about it? I guess I would like to see, I, I'm, I'm the one that instigated Gail to come here. I'm not, look at Gail down there.
Oh, yeah.
I've become an avid, uh, I don't play pickleball, I play the progressive tennis down, down south in the wintertime, it's a, it's played on a pickleball court, and I know there's pickleball players around who would be pickleballs, what I play is not quite as aggressive. Pickleball is a work and be aggressive, and I, some of us that have had shoulders or knees and don't wanna play quite be aggressive, the progressive is more underhand tennis, it's kind of a combination, a lot of fun. Um, my, my question is, have you thought about getting some people together that play this? Maybe a committee to work with you, Craig, on some alternatives or kind of get an idea of what your plans are? I mean.
Well, uh, didn't know that.
So that.
That, we would encourage you to do that.
What, put a committee together and work with you? I mean, I would like, because there are a lot of different ways to put, to put this together.
And that's one thing I was kind of thinking too, it'd be better off just abandoning what, you know, and starting up with maybe a smaller courts or something like that, then like I said, you'd eliminate the tennis, you know.
You can put two pickleball, you, what you do is you, you put mines, and did they talk about that?
Yeah.
You take, 'cause what is it, two tennis courts?
There's two tennis courts currently, yeah.
You can put just, some you can paint and some you can put stripes that stay and make two pickleball courts out of the tennis court, so you don't have to have separate, so you might have, you know, a pickleball league going on one court and having people, you know, family playing on the other court. So you're not limited, so you don't limit, I just think there's some options that maybe, might be, I, I realize you're probably, maybe still have the cost, but maybe not. Um, I'd just like there to be more, maybe some, a little more input on people that act, you know, that are playing, playing this and.
Yeah.
And Mark.
Progressive tennis, is that also known as masters tennis?
Yes.
Gotcha.
But it's not masters. Actually, well, how it got, I'm kind of boring you, but it got started, um, kids are taught with progressive tennis and master tennis, because if you play with children's, the size swamp, so the kid, little kids that are learning how to play tennis aren't overwhelmed with a big tennis court, a big tennis racket, they play similar to what we, how we play, is how they, is how they learn. You know, we have a tennis academy in Sioux Falls, you know, I just think, and I don't know where Mark plays, where are you playing pickleball?
I play at the Pentagon, um, other churches or, um.
Do you see, well, you're on with you talk, but anyway, I just wanted to share, um, share my feelings on it, that I'd be happy to be a part of, you know, I'm not, I'm not discounting what, what you've done, Craig, and, and the money part of it, of course, I, I don't, I don't have, but I do have some, some input in. The place that we stay in this, in the wintertime, it took them a long time to get the tennis players to let us have more of their pickle court, it's, it's the fastest growing sport, a senior sport in, in the country, and I know there's probably people around here that would play it if it was available, 'cause a lot of times, you know, other than golf, you know, seniors don't have a lot, you know, a lot to do, they can walk and, and, I mean, there are other things, of course, but I just think it'd be a neat added, um, when people look shop for places down south, they, first thing they wanna know is what's your pickleball court's like? And they're choosing where they, where they're buying their homes.
Listen up, Arden. Yeah.
I'll show you, I'll show you right where you go. Um, but anyway, you might be surprised, you.
I need a medical disclaimer for that too.
You know, when, when people are coming to town, you say, you know, hey, we've got, you know, a nice new, a little nice new tennis, tennis and pickleball area, so anyway, I'm rather enthused about it.
Um, if you get some folks together, please contact Teresa, and what we can have Teresa do.
Okay.
Is reach out to us as a council and Craig and maybe, you know, one or two of us from council. Craig, maybe we can set up a time, uh, you know, when the brewery's open or something and we'll have a meeting.
Well, there you have it. Okay, thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Mark, you can share.
Just add a couple things is all.
Sure.
I am associated with, um, Sioux Falls Area Pickleball Association, and they have a president and, and they work with the Parks Department and the, the city as far as, you know, allocating, uh, money and courts, and they keep working and trying to expand it, I think there's over three hundred members that play pickleball in Sioux Falls. And I think. And I think one other thing, little expense would be locks. So you could lock up your nets, your whatever balls, and then it'd be coated. And so if four people wanted to come play, they just put the coat in, set their net up, and then they can start playing. So, uh, I'm not sure how the lights are down there.
They don't work very good at all, aren't they?
I was told there was light.
There was lights, it's just, uh, all the controls got destroyed twice right before we put over five thousand into them. So the wire's still there, just that...
Because in the summertime, you know, it's kinda nice, when it's cooler, late at night. I guess that's about all.
Well, we're gonna keep talking about it, that's, I would venture that...
Yeah, we gotta, you know, the sports complex gets a lot of attention, but, uh, the growing, saying that of the population, as you alluded to, both of you, that, uh, like stay active and if your only option is golf or to drive into Sioux Falls, then it's, doesn't necessarily mean that for being fair to constituents, you know?
And I know if they got it going here in town, it'd be kinda slow, cause a lot of people don't even know what pickleball is. And just to get it started, and, but, uh, sure would be nice to have a, a very score.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we're gonna have to do something, cause our court is not even gonna change.
It's a liability.
Right. So that's, that's gonna be one of the first things. We're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do. We're gonna have to probably, if we're gonna move forward, we're gonna have to make a decision on what we're gonna do with the court.
And there'd be a problem too of juveniles or whoever, you know, causing problems with the courts and things like that.
Invite them to play some pickleball.
Yo.
I think, I think that's, I think that can be added. I said, "I think that can be worked out." I mean, there's some organization that can get it along with the court tennis. Thank you.
All right, thanks you guys.
I was actually approached right before COVID hit from Linda Shore. She wanted to put this on agenda, but then after the COVID thing hit, she decided to put it on hold too, so.
Do I need to know this later? Okay, maybe I, I might, I might reach out to, to your ones and names, I mean, if you know this, but I know, I'll, I'll find some.
All right. Craig, anything else?
It's all I got, no significant questions.
Questions, Craig?
I do, uh, lighting, on street lighting. See that there's a stake in the ground on Van Mark?
Yep.
Does it make sense, is that the only one that's recommended, or does it make sense to just put them in and be done?
We've had some discussion on this, I didn't even know anything about it, so.
Oh, really?
So I have been in contact with Sioux Valley and, um, there was some plans of putting a aluminum one in there. And I just, I just gotta talk to Donald about it here, Monday, Tuesday, something like that, and...
Yeah, I saw it said a aluminum one.
Yeah, so right now the city's standard is wooden poles.
Yep.
So that could be considered part of his development yet with the new housing, stuff from there, new sidewalks and that. But typically the developer pays a thousand dollars for the pole, which basically goes toward maintenance fees, and it covers about three, maybe four years at the most of maintenance fees, three? So, so that's where we're at with right now. I had Sioux Valley put a hold on this until we got all the details figured out with it.
Gotcha.
Cause Sioux Valley standard has changed.
We didn't contact Sioux Valley, the city didn't contact Sioux Valley.
I don't know.
We just, we just found out on the backside.
Sure, I have next to us, three of us, depends on how many were informed.
And the standards of Sioux Valley has changed. The standards changed where they used, we used to just be at intersections. Um, and now Sioux Valley's recommending with the new LEDs, they're not quite as, go on as much, they're more focused down. Um, they're doing more of a closer stagger on the longer run. It's kinda like what they did on Mickelson, it all just every hundred feet, whatever there's a pole. So that's where we're at with right now, and I don't, Doc has anything else to add?
I have, I guess my thought is that on the west side of the street there, there's three lights now. My thought is some of them should go on the golf course side. But I don't know.
How often do we stagger? I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Mickelson, you know, they're all, they're on the south side of Mickelson. No, 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 I'm not saying that. Absolutely not. No, that's not fair. But it becomes more of a city, a safety issue, you know, walking.
I mean, I understand that they're all on the same side, but it seems unfair for the landowners that, for the developer, that we'd have to foot the bill for...
What if they're all on the same side and you didn't have to foot the bill?
Well, that'd be great.
Super wooden ones.
And the wooden ones, we don't charge the developer for, cause that's our, the city pays for the standard wooden pole. We made that motion if they want to upgrade.
Which is what you did to your development.
Yes.
I remember that discussion.
So wooden pole could go in there, the city would cover, no charge to you.
You know, to be fair, uh, I would say that, that's maybe something that was overlooked on Van Mark. As you alluded to, Mickelson got lighting along its pole.
And Sioux Valley's, I've talked to them before, and they're more willing, more than willing to come and put more lights in there.
Oh, I'm sure.
But like I said, they would all be wooden, and that's what they don't wanna have on that side of that area. Which, it's gonna be on a place up there with all the rest of the aluminum poles, just that, the way our standard is. And there's motions and there's anything from that to install wooden poles unless the developer wants to pay money for it. At the new, at the new developments, yeah.
Yeah, which is a thousand, I'm sure.
A thousand for poles, what we said.
And the thing that, that we also don't wanna do is, you know, eventually like that, but I mean, we don't wanna have a homeowner saying, "You know what? I'd like to have aluminum, if I'm gonna have a pole, I want aluminum, I wanna pay a thousand dollars." Well, that's fine and dandy, but after three years, the city's bill just went up more and more. Because of the cost of poles, so you hate to have a precedence out there letting people just pick and choose what kind of poles they had in front of the place.
Yeah, cause we originally decided the city standard would be wood, because they're, you know, we pay a maintenance fee per pole every month. And so the lowest maintenance one is the wooden poles. There's, the aluminum ones cost more maintenance, so that's why we decided to, if developers want the aluminum ones, a thousand dollar pole charge, and we figured that covers about three years maintenance. After that, city's paying all that cost. Um, same thing with ornamental lights, they cost more than the wooden lights too, so.
Just something Stockwell should've had on the plans, lighting? Should we address this a year ago?
We certainly could have lighted on it, but they would've been wooden poles. And that's, we could still put them in, and Sioux Valley has no problem doing that.
I look at more of a safety issue. I look at more of this, uh, it's dark and there's, there's a lot of people that walk, under bikes. And Saturday night, when we're having a graduation party, and I look across the street and there goes a skunk. And it's well lit, at least it, you know, it's no surprise if you're out walking, it's well lit.
I mean, Sioux Valley, I talked to you a while ago, they, he actually, Trevor came out and said, "Yeah, we could easily put more lighting in here." So I mean, they'll, we can send him an email tomorrow, get him marked and we're ready to put there, it's just that they would be in wooden poles.
I, I would entertain, uh, this being on our, our agenda next, for our next meeting as to how many that is and what the costs are. I mean, I, we know vaguely, it's, it's free or it's a thousand, but just as an action item.
We actually have, I think, a breakdown of what the aluminum poles are, well, off the bills.
Well, yeah, we get right off the bill, type of the cost difference.
Aluminum versus a wooden pole. Sioux Valley will stick either one in, they don't, don't matter to them.
Right, right, yeah.
And I'll, but I'll get ahold of Trevor and we'll find out how many more lights we really should have in there for the standards, so.
Is lighting in our development standards, design standards, or not?
All the lighting gets, or the developer comes forward, but they'll talk to Sioux Valley. Sioux Valley will actually come out, state out what they recommend for lighting. They'll show Sioux Valley, the Sioux Valley will give us their plans of where the lighting's gonna go. We approve it, then it gets put in.
So the city doesn't have any design standards?
We don't know. It's all through Sioux Valley's standards. Our old standard was intersections.
Right, right.
Well, maybe we should look into having a design standard. A city design standard is not a Sioux Valley, Sioux Valley and a developer conversation, and then we're on the back end. Maybe we should have a design standard and say, moving forward, this is what it's gonna be. It's gonna be every hundred feet, and they're all gonna be on the same side. Or it's gonna be every hundred feet and they're gonna be, you know, staggered.
Yeah, they'll, like I said, Sioux Valley will show us the plans, cause I've had times when I wanted poles on different corners, just...
Yeah, but you, you say it's Sioux Valley, Craig, I don't know anybody that's Sioux Valley. And to be quite honest, I really don't care what Sioux Valley thinks, so.
When I talked to them, or originally talked to them, they just set it up, you have, the developer has no say in what they put.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I had no say. They just say, "You can put them here, here, and here."
Sure, but that's where, if the city had a design standard, I'd, I'd much rather tell Sioux Valley what they're gonna do instead of Sioux Valley telling us what we're gonna get.
That's a great point.
And we're gonna just, yeah, in the mountains, we could split one of those that...
This is a perfect time to add them.
Well, do they, do they provide you a photometric plan? No, they don't, probably. They're, they're just probably spacing it up. Yeah, so they don't give, I mean, I think that would be the key, is it's really easy to put that photometric plan together. Cause that, I mean, that tells you what you need to know, what you just know.
Is Sioux Valley working off of somebody's standard, or they're just going by spacing or accepted standards?
I guess I don't really know what they use for, for standards or what they go by.
Well, what they told me, they don't wanna go over X amount of feet, I don't remember what, what it was, I'm nervous, I'm really setting that up. I thought we had a lot of lights going around that first cul-de-sac. They just said, "We don't, we go by how many feet of street there is." So naturally on cul-de-sac, you would add some, cause you've got that many more feet of street.
Right, right. I guess I don't remember how the conversation went and why they ended up on Mickelson, they hired you at Mickelson.
Right.
And, and not on Van Mark.
Well, I think partially what, if I recall, that'd been a horrible one three, four years ago. It's cause there was concern about it being so dark down there at that far end. I'm pretty sure that's why.
At that time, there was no home.
Nothing down there. And I think that's why we, the lights were included, because it was gonna be, I think that was the concern if I remember, cause it was gonna be so dang dark down there.
Yeah, I remember talking about that.
Yeah, that was, that was all put together too by Sioux Valley. Stockwell didn't say this was one of the lights, I thought it was Sioux Valley's.
They just came in and, okay.
And I, like I said, I think things have changed a lot, where the standards per Hartford was intersections and the cul-de-sacs.
Okay, so if that's the case, so Mickelson tells her, or when Mickelson is in place, Sioux Valley says, "It's really dark down here, and this is a, a really long stretch of road."
We said that, you know, I think.
Yeah, but, but Sioux Valley says, "Okay, we're gonna put a, put a pole in this side of the street every so often," and it's done. And then fast forward to Van Mark, and Travis is sitting there wondering why the same standard didn't apply. Well, the same standard didn't apply because it's Sioux Valley's standard. It's not Hartford's standard, it's Sioux Valley's standard.
It wasn't Stockwell's standard.
It was, it was Sioux Valley's standard, period. All, all I'm saying is I think the city either needs to be sitting at the table with Sioux Valley, or we need to have our own design standards, that's all I'm saying.
So at the time of Mickelson though, somebody said something that Sioux Valley told them to take a look at.
Yeah.
I don't know who that would've been, would've been Stockwell.
Probably somebody that lived on Mickelson.
Well, it may have been. I don't remember that I told them.
Anytime Sioux Valley presents a, a major event like that, we...
It's been a while, but I'm glad you got your street back in the conversation.
All right, let's move on, nothing to see here, there we go.
So I, I guess, I mean, can we then at our next meeting have something in place that says, "X number of lights." This is, well, obviously if they're wooden, they're free. And, and if we're on aluminum, we can have a, have a more in-depth conversation about, we change them all to aluminum, does the city pay for it? Or how's that look?
Yeah, like I said, I got ahold of Trevor on Friday and told him to put a hold on that, and I seen him come through. First thing I asked Teresa, I said, "Did you tell them that you put a light, you're going on a line?"
It was presented to me like, "Hey, see Sioux Valley put a wooden stake in my yard, must be where the light poles go on." It's an aluminum. Well, that's interesting.
So I'm not sure if we're talking to Sioux Valley that...
It wasn't me.
So how would we move this forward if we want to?
I'll talk to Sioux Valley, I'll talk to...
Create a design standard though, Craig, how would we do that?
I'd like to sit down with them and just see what their basis of.
Yeah.
If there's, if there's anything like, what, what's your basis and what's your, what's your spread on that? And what, what we've actually experienced, cause hey, by the way, we agree with you, the LEDs are different, different beasts.
Yep.
So if we need to adopt something that's a little bit different so that it meets what your needs are, then we can do that and say, "Well, this is what we want, per X feet that is required." And, and the only thing I, I don't love about per X feet is we've got curvilinear roads, but that doesn't, that doesn't really cover it. You know, so that's why I always say you gotta go before the better plan.
Yep.
Because then at least you have coverage, and then you actually go back and it has to be X lumens per, you know? That's the minimum that you have to have coverage for.
Yep.
Well, it, it sure seems like Sioux Valley has a design standard. And nobody knows what it is, right? But they obviously have.
They've got something they go off of.
That's why I said no.
It was going under, over so many feet and under so many feet, I don't remember.
No, they know where it is.
Back in the day, it was in the middle of your yard, made it to ball for me.
I'll tell you what, I, I looked at my, I looked at my light pole so long, I don't even see it there anymore.
Well, we're putting it on the next agenda, talking about the lights on Van Mark, what we wanna do with that and the difference of cost.
Yep.
And then we can work with David and ISG, get together with Sioux Valley, and then work at something into the design standards, cause now's a perfect time to do it, to update it.
All right, go now. Anything else for Craig? We're gonna let him off the hook?
Thanks, Craig.
All right. I just sort of, it's a figure of speech. Karen?
Something to add?
I got something to add, remember what we talked about?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So when I was down here yesterday going through the agenda with Teresa, I noticed in our, um... The report? No, I'll think of it. What's your, oh, what's it, what's the?
Money cash?
No, yeah, debt service, debt service, thank you. I noticed in our debt service that we have three loans coming up that are paid off in 2022. And I said to Karen, I said, "Well, it looks like right now we've got, you know, and some money." Of course, Teresa said, "No, we don't, don't look at that." I said, "It's right there, it's in the report, I seen it, there's money, I wanna spend it." And I thought, "Well, maybe we would, uh, pay those off early." Karen did some research, what did you say we would save?
Just over thirty-eight hundred dollars in interest.
It's not substantial, because they're at the end and we've paid most of the...
Interest rate.
We've paid most of the interest. So, and it was gonna be a hundred and, what was your figure, Karen?
Um, to make regular principal and interest payment, it was just over a hundred and twenty-six thousand. If we paid them all off now, saving the interest, it'd be just over a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So, saving.
So I just, you know, I just brought it up, cause I thought, well, we can get three, get three loans off the, off the list, so we can add a couple more back on.
That's a lot of pickleball, of course.
That is a lot of pickleball. The pager that got green.
Why is that third penny so, uh, not so far down, but it was a...
We don't have blue forty-two.
Okay, that's, that's, that's where my wheels were spent in that.
That's what I could, no towels, just dollars.
So we should see that, we should see that come back a bit.
Oh, tell, the opening will help, because they are in that third penny, they can get yours out and hopefully if anything ever goes in blue forty-two, but yeah, it is lower than.
Gotcha. Um, does the eighty thousand to the fire park normally, we normally see that before that is dispersed?
No, it's just a annual payment that we make, it's made every year.
It's in their contract.
Right, we see that much time.
It was in the check.
I say, it's, it's in the...
We talked about it, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember it being vividly in the budget. But that's not, uh, part of the net they request from us.
Not their approach, no, cause we have an agreement with them to pay their loan payments.
I couldn't remember that, I should've...
I believe it's contractual, isn't it, Teresa?
It's a contract.
Should've wrote that on there.
Probbed to pay it, we don't, we don't get a choice.
All right.
Fire service, you pay us.
Pretty much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Karen, for doing that.
Sure.
Work for me. I'm just always trying to get everything paid off, sorry.
I'm at that point in your life, man.
I am? All right, nothing else for Karen, thank you, Teresa. All right. Nothing else for Karen. Thank you. Teresa, anything to add?
Just a couple of updates. Somehow we've got everybody hired. We, um, just this last week hired another public works assistant. So we're really only looking for one park rec assistant. Of course, that doesn't start till July, so we have a little time to, to find that. And just have to be fourteen years old. So if anybody knows any kids out there, it's a good start first job. So if we get that hired, we've, we've got everybody. And luckily we've got enough hired for the pool and we've opened tonight, so that's going good. And I just want to point out, um, the citywide community plan that ISG is doing. Um, I know you guys know what's going on, but the Hartford twenty-twenty-five envision plan, our advisory board did agree to, or recommend to pay half of that plan to the HADF board and they approved it at their last meeting. So we'll get half of that paid for. So that's a good deal. Um, no, we're dead on our FEMA grant with the storm shelter. We keep trying to push them, but FEMA don't let us know. Um, and just to let you know, we had, we met with Randy Kittle with the GFMP, me and Craig did, a week ago to go over a grant for the bike trail and walked him through that. And then, um, I just got a call from him today and he's gonna be out June first to look at our storm park grant. So, so those are both moving forward.
So the dog park was in Craig's report. You, you've been working on some grants. What do we hope? What's a reasonable expectation for a grant for that dog park?
So I don't think I brought the grant with me. Um, I wanna say it's around fifty-five, fifty-seven thousand is what the total we come up with. And I think they would pay like twenty-eight thousand for it. But, um, as you recall, the Girl Scouts put in a grant to AARP as well for fifty thousand. Um, we don't know what portion they would pay, but if we could get even half funding from them, we could, most of it pay for, if they come through. So.
That's an answer I needed to take to, I got people that are wondering.
There are people, so we're hoping with the grants, if both of them come through.
It's not thirty-eight hundred dollars in interest.
It's not a dig. She be with. Andy has, I'm here and I can dig. What up?
Well, those grants, we can't do any work.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
With grants, it's a relationship. I can't do anything till we know, but we should know this summer on the dog park.
We can use city monies, uh, personnel that do labor and reuse that.
Yeah, it's kind of a in our in-kind contribution too. We can, whatever our city labor costs us, that can be part of our share.
Is it June? Open to see the response by June or August?
I thought you said August. I think August.
There are certain people that are willing to write the check right now for a dog park, so.
Well, that's good too. That's good to, that's good to know as well.
We, uh, let's.
Go ahead, I get.
I know, you know where I'm headed with this. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, with the online licensing. Yeah.
Like you get a dog park, can we make it any more difficult to get a dog license in this town?
I don't think it is real difficult.
Sure it is, if you work eight to five.
You can get the form.
You can? You can go online and get the form? I don't think so.
You can email us your rabies certificate.
Okay.
And we'll fill it out and you can pay online and we'll mail you a tag.
Throw the letter in the garbage.
Because we were doing it all through the mail.
Oh, we did that all through.
You got one too? Holy cow. We actually talked about this yesterday. That's what I was gonna bring up. We actually talked about this.
Jumping ahead, jumping ahead.
Well, I knew you were gonna bring it up. We, if we do have a dog park, one of the first stipulations that we've talked about is the dog's gotta be licensed.
It's gonna have to be in the sign for our insurance.
To monitor that and we could probably pay a person at the beginning to sit down there and sell dog licenses. You know what I mean? Because I would venture that there, and we know, there's a gazillion dogs in this town that are licensed.
I would like to say we have had a jungle of registrations since the letter went out.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, I am too, because I think we have more than sixty dogs in town, so.
That is awesome. All right, thank you.
All right.
I digress.
Anything else for Teresa or Craig? We're back on Craig. He's still on the line. I like that. All right, we're gonna move to old business. We're gonna talk about review twelve street petition, cost estimates, funding scenarios. Who wants to start?
You want me to go through the cost estimates?
I want to go through the cost estimates.
Because we did put together three. You want to break that up? So there's three process statements in front of you. That first, the first one, the large one is that West, West Twelve Street cost estimate. And that is kind of exactly how it, it, it states. It's West Twelve Street. From the NAPS landing, it only goes to the Oaks Avenue intersection and then it goes all the way over to the highway. But it, uh, just, you know, on the south end, it's that, that Oaks Avenue intersection. So, um, but that's for, for all of the utilities and, um, the pavement. We talked about going full RCP on that, but what we ended up doing was really for the turning movements because there's gonna be some industrial traffic there. So the intersection, we did PCC, pack great. And then we did everything else asphalt. Um, the second one is actually the, the, the three hundred foot that is into NAPS landing. Um, and that is, you know, when you look at that use, we did pare that down. So when you look at Twelve Street, we went with six inch asphalt with more of that industrial use. Then we did transition in NAPS landing with that four inch HMM pavement. And then the third one, um, and there is an image in the back, uh, or that last page. It, it doesn't really show this third estimate, but this third estimate is Oaks Avenue reconstruction downs actually connected to the sanitary sewer. That's a part of the, the larger sanitary sewer extension to the north project. But really that's a necessity because we have to get that sanitary sewer to this point. So you can't, we need to do that from an elevation perspective. Um, we, we did want to make one modification, um, on those plans that were provided by Stockwell. Oaks Avenue, we did beef up to a six inch asphalt because that's from a roadway type. Um, we would recommend that you go from the four to the six, um, that, that beefier section, um, just because of the adjacent land use. Um, but that's the only true modification. But you did pull that out because that is, is not really in a sense a part of this, of this project. It's part of a, of a bigger project. Um, but it's really a necessity to do this project, if, if you understand what I'm saying. Because we had to get to that, down to that sanitary sewer. Any questions on those three estimates and how we, we broke that out?
So just on Claire and David, the first one is to the edge of NAPS?
Yeah, exactly.
First one is to the edge of NAPS?
To Western. Yep.
The next one is the extension into NAPS landing.
Yep.
And the third one is the intersection rebuild kind of at Oaks.
And, and south. Because we have to, we have to go, uh, do you remember how many feet we have to go to the south?
I do not. It should be the, like the center sort of.
Yeah.
And it's, the quantities are taking straight from Stockwell's bid, bid set.
Yep.
So that's where I at least.
So we're going quite a ways down. We're going seven hundred feet down Oaks.
Okay.
And we were replacing in the, the roadway there, we were replacing in between curving gutter and curving gutter, just resurfacing that and replacing the sanitary sewer.
So in essence, the third estimate could be part of the sewer project that we're doing to get that pipe. You'd add an, to me, you'd add an octastomatal.
Exactly.
That sewer project, we could do up Western.
So the Western Avenue project rather than go.
Well, we were gonna go that way.
It was gonna go that way.
It was gonna go up Oaks and down the right away for Twelve Street and then up Western. So, yeah, it's still going that same way.
The, the only thing, and then my question to Craig, and he clarified which helped a ton, is the only thing that was goofy to me on those plans was on Oaks, we're connecting an eight inch in extending and then we transitioned to twelve, that Western. But that's really for future development, um, along Western. That, that would be extended out a twelve inch sanitary sewer. And eventually, in the long-term plan, would be to run that twelve inch sanitary sewer along Western.
Sure.
You know what I mean? To get, to get back to, to a twelve. You're not gonna tie a twelve into an eight. It just looks kind of confusing right now because you are actually extending an eight inch and then you're transitioning to a twelve is because of the future expansion. You just, just talk to that.
Twelve inch six, right? Currently it ties into a six.
It ties into an eight.
Does tie into.
It ties into an eight. Yep, yep. But as, as development continues to the north, that does make a ton of sense that we have twelve. But at that point in time, you'd end up upgrading that twelve along Western and tying back into your existing system when you have that luxury.
So you're timing it up to probably rebuild Western.
Well, how we kind of have it set up right now is actually in kind of the road ditch is, is really where it would align with. Um, it depends on what you can get for estimates there and.
So as we're looking at, uh, Western Avenue improvements in the future, that sanitary sewer, would it extend all the way to Nicholson? Or would it?
It'd go down to South Street or by the fire station falls. That's a whole point, yeah.
Yep, yep. And then over fall. Sure, cut. Okay.
Which, which makes a ton of sense. But it doesn't make a ton of sen, ton of sense to, to replace Oaks to, to twelve because you're gonna have to dig up a ton of infrastructure to try to reroute a twelve all the way through town. Yeah. Yep.
They'd cap that eventually. That eight would be, you'd say an eight, the twelve would be a twelve.
Yep. You would, you would end up, you'd, you'd probably go right out Western where you were transitioning to that. You would cap it at that point in time. Yep, yep. And you'd have your twelve.
Agreed.
The only reason that we're really going all the way down Oaks was just from sanitary depth. You know, we just gotta get down deep enough to get to that. Yep. Any questions on those, those three estimates?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
So just a point of clarification that there, uh, that twelve hundred and twenty feet of eight inch PVC sanitary sewer, seven hundred of that wouldn't actually be part of this plan because it's already a Trump Lane sanitary sewer construction project plan which is gonna be assessed by way of, uh, uh, sanitary sewer district or is gonna be paid for by, by way of the two grants that you applied for.
Yeah, I said, we're, we haven't discussed that project all the plans and it's on hold, like you know, Bill, until we, you know, if we get any funding for that on the storm shelter. And then we'll discuss again of how we'll, how much that project will do and how we actually fund it.
But, but you're not putting two pipes in is the point.
Not whole. No.
No, because even.
About seven hundred feet from Oaks.
Yep.
Oaks West is part of the Trump Lane sanitary sewer extension.
Correct.
And then I, I presume that somewhere or another, this, this, uh, contemplating some kind of access to the sewer and the water that would be installed along Twelve Street, access to the north.
It does. It, there was actually on the sanitary plans, there was two, uh, locations indicated there.
Um, you're talking about from between Oaks and Western?
Yeah.
Now from Oaks to, to NAPS landing?
And I think there was one additional one indicated there. I mean, I, I don't think I've seen anything from a plan perspective of exactly what would be, um, like lots that would be proposed there. So we want to know where, you know, and we don't want to sell out service lines just to sell out service lines, right? So we can most certainly sell out service lines, but we know, want to know is what the plans are for any person.
Probably be a problem area.
Yep, yeah. But not a major, not a major cost implication of a service line.
Putting service lines, yeah.
Yep. Let me green screen please.
So you want me to go over, so I typed up this Twelve Street funding scenario.
I see that. Yep.
So, um, so basically, the first cost scenario you have in there are, you know, those first two estimates that David talked about. And that's gonna be from Western all the way to that three hundred feet in NAPS landing. So it's just under one point, and if adding those together is just under one point three million. We would have assessments for the property owners, that hundred dollars a foot of almost three hundred thousand. So the cost to the city is gonna be just over a million dollars for that. Depending on, we're probably gonna have to loan it. I mean, we, there's no grants to just do street improvements unless they're going to critical infrastructure. So, um, say we get a loan, I, I'm just kind of estimated, you know, two and a half percent for twenty years. So it'd be about a sixty-five thousand dollar a year loan payment if we do all of that area. And then the next scenario is if we don't do into NAPS landings development, if we just take this first cost estimate and that's going to be just about one point one million. Um, if we assess adjoining property owners, that's about two hundred thousand assessments. It'd be about nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, cost of the city. Same loan scenario, two and a half percent for twenty years would be about almost fifty-nine thousand, just under fifty-nine thousand a year loan payment for the city. Um, I said, I didn't include this third option because if we decide to move forward with Twelve Street and we would want to add this to our sewer project with the cost, this amount, yeah. So that's kind of the way I figured those dollars.
Teresa, have we ever, as I look at this map, have we ever taken a petition? The, the hundred dollar a foot petition, which before it was a hundred dollars, was what, seventy-five dollars?
Forty-nine fifty when I started.
Forty-nine fifty.
Cheaper than that ever.
And I vaguely recall that coming to be because there were gravel roads in town that were, well, that needed curving gutter and asphalt. And in order to facilitate better will among citizens, you gave them a break if they petitioned to turn their own, to do their own street. Instead of the city saying, we're gonna do it and you're gonna pay whatever we assess. So then as time went by, prices went up and eventually it got to a hundred dollars. And now that's even low, I think, by today's standards. But I don't ever recall a petition being turned in to build a road.
A brand new that wasn't already like a gravel street?
Has there?
The only one I think we're doing is when, you know, we did Nicholson and dipped down, but that wasn't even by petition. It was a city project.
Fourth street got done on petition. That was already there.
Yeah.
Fifth street got done on petition. That was already there.
And of course, if you have Main and Second Street, these, all of these are already existing.
They were already there. I can't think of one that got petitioned that wasn't already there.
Is it, is it fair to say too that the hundred dollars, as I read this, doesn't, uh, disresolution? A hundred dollars is just for street and sidewalk improvements, not sanitary sewer water main improvements?
Correct. That's just for the spring improvements.
So as we look at these, these deducts of assessed values, that's not maybe accurate because we don't have actual sanitary and water main improvement costs?
Yeah, we don't have those costs figured in, yeah.
So this is worst case scenario because it doesn't include the assessment for sanitary water main improvements in that same area. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Right.
So those costs are in this proposal, but those costs are not assessed, assessed to property.
That's the way the numbers that I'm looking at are.
Yes, exactly. Our assessment policy, as you read it, allows us to assess for utilities, water, sewer, what? We have never done that. But we certainly have that ability. If you read.
It says.
Further down, yeah.
Water, those improvements should be the actual cost as per the city's general assessment policy.
So you're asking that mark because the first line in the special assessment general says, special assessment rate for any street and sidewalk improvement. So this is technically not an improvement. This is an installation. So this is technically not an improvement. This is an installation of a control. Is that what you're, was kind of where you were taking that?
Because the, the, the policy with, with citizens passing petitions, like Justin did, Vanamar was already in. The infrastructure was already in. So he circulated a petition. You've signed a petition, we guarantee you're only gonna be charged a hundred bucks a foot. And, and that was the, that was the point of the lower number on the petition. So the city didn't go to Justin and all the neighbors on Vanamar and say, you know what? We're putting this in and you're gonna eat it and we're gonna assess it. So if the citizens circulated a petition because it was a lower price than the actual cost, more people were apt to do it.
Right.
The city ate some on the back end, but the citizens were happier and you got a new street.
And you as a citizen, you.
You knew what your cost was.
You knew what your cost was.
Period.
Yep.
So there weren't any overruns, there weren't, whatever the market did, it didn't matter because you were.
Didn't matter to the citizen.
It didn't matter to the citizen.
Yeah, because they got locked in.
But Justin could go door to door and he could say, you signed a petition, I guarantee it's a hundred bucks a foot, period.
And then when the assessment comes, people go, or is this assessment coming from, how is this a hundred bucks a foot? That's a different story.
You're always, excuse me, you're always gonna have that.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we're looking. You're developing the roadway. I mean, if you don't, if you don't think you are, you are. I mean, that's.
But if it was, if the intent wasn't to develop.
I agree, yeah.
The intent was to improve.
But this is to develop a road.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. You need to.
And this cost doesn't reflect those sanitary and sewer improvements. It would be assessed back to, potentially back to the property owner. And it, one other thing that's missing for me is what's the ROI on this? There's no spec, how can I say that? There's no anticipating. This development will open up how many lots in Naps Landing with potential assessment, tax assessed values of X amount of dollars per household, generating X amount of revenue for the city, opening up the south end of your development with this potential. It brings what's forecast to be built there with these valuations of this tax assessment. Now, as a, as a, as a business owner, there's no ROI here. It is flat cost. Why would I spend the money? They want to say, so to make an educated decision, I think those are other numbers that we need as a city council.
So Mark, you asked about, there was only one road that I could think of that we did differently, and that was Diamond Trail, but that was to open up all that development out there, commercial development.
We bester a lot from Western House.
We worked out the deal with Tams.
East Diamond Trail.
West.
West Diamond Trail. We moved.
We moved East Diamond.
That's the only road I could think of.
But, but that, that was a, that was a lovely private.
There's a lot of horse trading, a lot of things going back and forth.
Milford.
They gave us the land.
Costello's and the city. That was, that was a four party swing.
Yep, that's the only road I could think of that we did, or did anything like that.
Yep. And that's what, a lot.
Yeah.
That was four parties, public and private, and it was one block. But you're right, that wasn't there.
That just got from Western into their.
Yep.
Back to the.
That's right. Industrial, so there would have been more residential, boys.
But that, that, there's a lot of moving parts to that.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff to that.
And how many, what, how many, how many acres of this cost though? Was that 40 acres of commercial?
I don't know if there's quite 40. Well, there might be.
Which was probably 20 or 30.
I don't know. Well, I forgot about that.
These numbers don't scare me by any stretch. It's, it's, you know, the Hartford Air Sports and Rikers are here to defend themselves. But when we look at it in investment, in that, it's a lot more, it's a lot less. There always appears to be a lot less ROI. Unless you could say we're gonna have 30 ball, you know, tournaments that are gonna generate X amount of revenue, you know, the ancillary effect of that is this.
Well, and like I said, and that's still hard to come up with because, you know, Bill's land all to the north, I mean, he does have preliminary plans to do something with it. When, and if that ever does, you know, is that in three years, five years, 10 years? I don't know. Same thing for just right west of the building center, you know, if that land just turned over half, I don't, that person's out of, was it Washington State? Washington State is like, I haven't talked to them in a while. So I have no idea what they, you know, why they purchased that or what that was gonna be or, you know, what the ATS, what the, the land around them, I think they're gonna expand, when and if, yeah, and with what? Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of unknowns.
Craig, it just done, I don't think, you brought up West Diana, but that didn't come in on a hundred foot, a hundred dollar per foot basis. That was actual cost.
Was it like?
That, that wasn't petition for a hundred dollar per foot.
Yeah, I think you're right. We didn't.
That was just cost.
It was a cost and we traded line part, yep. You're right.
So I got a question.
Go ahead.
When I get to 30 lots or 30 houses in my development, we need a second exit. So at that time, is it gonna be gravel street? Is it going to be an asphalt street? So my 12th Street then?
City's design standards require a second access for you. Is that what, that's what you're saying?
At 30.
When you get to 30 lots?
At 30 lot.
So that's what I'm saying. We can't, we can't certainly just shell this. We obviously have to plan for it and, and so, you know, you hear your point. Well, this is why we have to plan for it.
I have a question on that. So you made a comment, Teresa, in your deal. So when we are by design standard have to have a second exit, does that give us any ability to go get some state or federal funds? Is that a necessity?
That's our design standard. I don't, no.
Well.
I don't think so. It's gonna say, make your developer put in a second access that in his plans.
I try.
That would give us any funds. That would be great. We could. That would be good.
I'm swinging for the fence.
Well, yeah, I put in there because, yeah, he's perfectly right. He's gonna need us.
And even your point, if we said, yeah, you do, and it's, we're gonna rent your property line. Because, you know, I think what you're saying is, we're, we're, now we're going into a development, a development, a private development, and what is there, sorry, what precedent, right?
Well, in the event, in the event you get into 30 houses and need a second E dress, the city could pass a resolution just to put it in and assess all property owners for sewer, water, curb gutter and asphalt. And then at that time, we could decide whether we wanted to do the hundred dollar a foot for curb gutter and asphalt or not. Because by rights, we could assess wherever we wanted. We could assess the same type of costs.
Because you're building your road.
Well, see, the, the thing I hung up with here is, so you being the developer, you could put your 300 feet in. You could develop that, put your 300 feet in. But I don't think you could make Mr. Howden put his.
If we're gonna do ours, we just thought to keep it flowing all at one time.
And, and I'm just thinking out loud, because you could certainly, you could certainly hire a contractor and put your 300 foot in nowhere. And then the city would have to, then put the city in a position to put 12th in from Western to your property line and then assess those costs.
Do you have it cut and, and ready for the two?
All you gotta do is gravel and curb gutter.
On the west side there, it's already down to a year or so.
Yeah.
So that's what I was thinking.
That design standard requires that he has, he has an access once he gets to 30 lots. So to, to your scenario, once he gets to that point, say for example, that the city, you're suggesting that the city could, could. Decide to, decide to build that street at that time and assess the property owners. But I guess I would say if it got to that point, you require an access. You don't require a curb and gutter and sewer and water at that point. You require an access. You can put an access in by rolling out some gravel and running it up to Naps Landing.
That's true.
Everyone only have to go to.
Really? Absolutely. Not all the way even the Western. Right. To meet that, to give them an access.
But our design standards would say that they couldn't be gravel though.
Right.
So it'd have, it'd have to be curb gutter and asphalt. But you're right, you don't have to go to Oaks. There's a lot of moving parts for this little bit.
Yeah, I think this probably is gonna need to continue on the agenda, probably another meeting.
It may be wonderful.
Yeah, and we'd like to have everybody here.
Everybody be for the discussion.
I, I have just another question.
You bet.
So, so this, I mean, do you have any, do you have any experience, I guess, recently with something that would resemble this kind of a road development, if you will, and how the cost of that might compare with what your estimate is? In other words, is your estimate really close?
Well, we've bid probably, I don't know, 60 lots of roadway this spring, so probably.
Do you know how much a linear foot that show costed? I didn't go back and figure that. What was that about?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're basing it off of recent bid prices. We, we seriously just bid 60 lots of roadway this spring, as I know.
Road development, not just.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, it's true, because Ninth Street was accurate as it was gravel.
Right.
So was Vanamar.
Mickelson would be the last example.
Well, and that was partially gravel until you got to the curb, till you swung.
Yeah, but I think when you get down on the end, well, the structure. That, that really isn't even a good example.
Yeah, that was just sensitive.
Yeah, that big box called the cost was, so that was.
No, I mean, you could, you could break out, you could break out the water, break out the sewer, break out the, you could break all the costs out of the bid.
I was just saying, that number is clearly 40%.
Yeah, okay.
That's way more than that though.
Number that's in there, yeah.
Well, I think first, in the next couple days, sell 30 more houses. Do you have a real number or?
I don't know if you wanna hear it.
18.
I wanna hear it.
18.
So you're at 12.
I bet it's substantially higher.
We're at 13. It's a mythical way higher because 60 more.
Okay. So it's not 30.
We have a normal year.
Yeah, that's 250 for one side.
Yeah.
250.
So it's 500 for Mickelson.
500 for both sides. 250 for one side and then your foot. When Mickelson, that's what I had in my head too, that it cost, that was 70. 250 linear foot for one side. So, you know, per side, so.
500.
943.
943 dollars a linear foot, full width, full width, curb gutter.
Good point.
That is not called a public sewer.
900.
For years.
When did we do Mickelson? Three years ago, four years ago? What was that number? I'm sorry. 943. A linear foot. So it's 18, 1900 dollars. Because it's 843.
No, that's the entire.
That's the entire road.
Entire width.
The entire width, okay.
Okay.
Because that's actually. 450 dollars a side.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we were 250 a side.
Yeah.
And now it's four.
So it's 200 bucks higher in three wash years.
Yeah.
What do we got a deal on that Mickelson road?
Saying for a long time, it's never cheaper than it is today.
Why?
Because I keep bringing it into the conversation.
Once, once the door got open in Mickelson, you're just gonna talk about it all night.
I am. It's kind of my job, probably. All right. Anything else on this one? You guys got any more questions, comments? Hopefully next week, our next meeting will have, have a full staff and, or not staff, full council.
Oh, yeah, our 300 foot wouldn't have any water and sewer.
Because we'll do all that.
Arguably. Yeah, we'd argue that.
So is that taken out?
Yes.
Couple bucks.
Talk people, everybody talk people.
You gotta, you gotta stop up there, I assume, right, for, for loop, for loop and stuff?
For water.
For water hills, yeah, but not sewer. Your sewer all runs.
Downhill.
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 Both ways.
Your downhill roads.
Any other additional questions, comments on this deal? We'll keep her on the agenda, Teresa, for her next meeting when we get to kind of a full contingent. All right? Intake for correspondence? If not, I need a motion to go into executive for economic development personnel and legal.
Still moving.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.